I now call the Huntsville City Council meeting in order. All that would like to and are able to, please rise for the invocation. Read by Reverend Eurla Lockhart, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Kling.
Creator and sustainer of life. The citizens of Huntsville, Alabama know you and celebrate you and recognize you in many ways. But we are united in our desire to see our city become a better place to live. We thank you for the governance that you have given, for the wisdom and vision that you give continually to those who are elected and appointed in this city. We ask now that you would keep us all walking in a way that will lead Huntsville to higher paths. Allow us to love mercy and justice and walk humbly with each other. We give you thanks and ask these blessings in the name in which we place our trust. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Lockhart. Thank you, Mr. Kling. The minutes from the May 8th meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Coach Patterson to come up. I think Coach Patterson, I think we have some young people to be recognized for athletic feats of what they've done. Coach?
Thank you, Mayor Battle. And it's our pleasure tonight to recognize some of the outstanding track and field athletes in the city of Huntsville. As you know, in the spring, we have numerous sports with golf, tennis, soccer, baseball, softball, and just the numerous kids out participating. And we have some that have excelled. And tonight's our night to recognize these people. First, I'm going to ask the four young ladies from Huntsville High School to come up here. Got Laurel Sharp, Sarah Mohan, Gillian Sharp, and Abigail Zane. The young four come up. And by the way, two of these ladies are sisters, okay? So, not sure who ran what leg on the relay, but four times 800 meters. So, for those of you that are not familiar with track, each one runs twice around the track and ends up being approximately, you know, two miles to 3200 meters. This is the Class 6A champions for the state of Alabama. So, congratulations to them, each one of them, okay? So, I'm going to pass the mic down. You tell us your name, what year you were in school, or what year you just finished, and which leg you ran on the relay.
I'm Abigail Zane. I'm freshman and I ran the first leg.
I'm Sarah Mohan. I'm a junior and I ran the anchor leg, so the fourth leg.
I'm Gillian Sharp. I'm a sophomore and I ran the third leg.
Laurel Sharp. I'm graduating tomorrow and I ran the second leg.
All right, I am not sure, did Jared Breach from Huntsville High School make it in? I thought he was going to be here and we'll get his certificate to him or invite him back to a later meeting. At this time, I would like for Christina Tunis, Kayla Schoff, Catherine Brandon, and Sidney Baker to come up. All right, so we're missing one, right? Okay. This is the group from Whitesburg Christian Academy. And they are the Class 1A champions four times 400 meter relay. So, each one of these young ladies was one trip around the track and they are the state champions in Class 1A. So, if you would have passed the mic and tell us your name and which leg and what year you're in school. Thank you.
I'm Christina Tunis. I'm a sophomore and I ran the lead leg.
I'm Kayla Schoff. I'm a sophomore and I ran the second leg.
I'm Sidney Baker. I am a senior and I ran the fourth leg.
Okay, so the third leg is missing. And she probably couldn't find a parking place. And we tried to warn them a little bit about the parking down here on Thursday night. But talking with these young ladies beforehand, I think there's only one senior in the group. So, they may be challenging for that title once again next year. So, congratulations to each one of y'all, okay?
Mr. Kling, did I hear you comparing times?
Mr. President, I think my 440 was equal to their one mile rate.
We have some Monkey Madness in just a little bit, but I think that's going to come in just a minute.
Yeah, we're going to do that in a minute. Next up, we have several resolutions, 2A through 2I. The resolutions congratulating various people for the 30th Annual Leadership Award banquet sponsored by the Huntsville Progressive Alumni Chapter, Inc., held at the Ernest L. Knight Reception Center of Alabama A&amp;M University. I'm going to move to consolidate and approve 2A through 2I.
Second.
All those in favor of consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. Showers, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I would certainly like to resolve and congratulate the following. Mr. Frank Williams, Landen McCarty Chrysler Dodge Jeep Fiat and Ram for the Corporate Leadership Award for this year. I want to congratulate Dr. Patricia G. Sims, Education Leadership Award. Want to congratulate Dr. William A. Beal Craig, Government and Industry Leadership Award. I want to also congratulate Ms. Lefrida M. Jordan, Government Relations Leadership Award. Want to also congratulate the Reverend Christopher Jermaine Turner, Religion Leadership Award. Congratulating Dr. Anthony Tony, Small Business Leadership Award. Congratulating Ms. Geraldine D. Williams, Outstanding Alumni of the Year. And congratulating Mr. Knute R. Walker, Outstanding Alumnus of the Year. This event will take place on June the 7th at the Knight Center. And at that time, I will be resolving these on behalf of the mayor and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. And now, we're going to recognize Huntsville High School Robotics Team Monkey Madness. Mr. Kling, Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, I think we all on the council got information about this achievement that was done by the robotics team. And it's very impressive. So, let me just say that congratulations and I think we're all very awed of what goes on in this community. And with that, I guess let me just turn it over to Mayor Battle.
Could we ask the Monkey Madness team to come up along with their sponsor? Come on. All right, since we've got you all up here and we're putting you on the spot, who wants to be spokesman? Tell me about what you did. Come on, all right.
All right, so this year, we've competed at a number of competitions. It started off with the Georgia State Competition. Alabama doesn't have enough teams to have a state competition, so we have to travel all the state to compete. So, we ended up winning the Georgia State Competition, which advanced us to the next level of competition. We also competed at the Arkansas State Competition, which we won that as well. Advanced us to the superregional level of competition, which was all of the southeast. We ended up advancing well enough, or doing well enough there to advance to the world competition. So, we competed at the world level this year and we ended up placing 24th in the world.
Would you like to introduce our team?
All right, so I'm Thomas Kozar.
My name is Renee Kozar and I've been honored and privileged to coach this team this year. And I use that term very loosely. But one other thing that they didn't, they failed to mention, last summer, we traveled to Australia and competed at the Asian Pacific Invitational. And they did extremely well. They placed second in the head-to-head robot competition, as well as placing second in the judging categories overall. So, this year, they are the Arkansas State Champions, the Georgia State Champions. They made it to the semifinals in the Southeast Regionals and made it to the world. So, they did pretty great. This is Thomas Kozar. He's a sophomore. Matthew Castleberry, a junior. Sarah Darrow, a junior. Ben Allen, a junior. And Daniel Doherty, a junior.
And one of the things, and thank you for doing so much for these young students. One of the things that we have been pushing in the city of Huntsville is advanced manufacturing. Advanced manufacturing is robotic-type manufacturing that takes a high-tech level of work skill. And y'all are working that every day. So, when you come out, you will be career-ready. If you've never been out and seen the Raytheon Missile Plant, it is the most advanced plant robotically in the world. And it's just amazing to watch and see what they have done with their robotics. And then see what y'all have done on a day-to-day basis. You've just done a fantastic job. So, thank you for representing the city of Huntsville. Thank you for advancing advanced manufacturing for the city of Huntsville. And we have certificates for each of you. Thank you very much. You would take those and pass them out to everybody and if y'all would shake hands with all the council members, we sure would appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kling and Mayor Battle. Council members in the audience, tonight on our agenda of 15 U, it has been asked that we vote on that. We'll need the mayor's consent to vote on that tonight, 15 U. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-235 zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Nick Fitchard Road and west of Research Park Boulevard to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This was set April 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
Lisa Letto, Planning Division. This is 2.03 acres of newly annexed property. It's the hatched area that you see here. It's commercial property. There's a site of proposed commercial development along with the property you see adjacent to it to the south. And, excuse me, the proposed zoning of Neighborhood Business C1 District has been recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Letto. Does anyone here from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-237 zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Crister Drive and north of US Highway 72 West to Residence 2A District. This was set April 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
This is 3.1 acres of property. The proposed zoning is Residence 2A District, which is consistent with the adjacent properties. It's residential land. There is one existing single-family detached dwelling on the property and Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you, Ms. Letto. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Ms. Tremblay, state your name and address for the record, please.
Ralph Tremblay, 2117 Hackett Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. I rise to make sure that this particular district here is better served, would it be better, kind of be better served as a commercial district in lieu of a residential area because of its location?
Is that your only question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Letto, can you answer that, please?
No, this area that you see here along Christopher Drive is developed as residential. The proposed zoning of Residence 2A would be consistent with the other single-family homes along Christopher Drive.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-239 zoning newly annexed property lying on the north side of US Highway 72 West and east of Jeff Road to Highway Business C4 District. This was set April 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
This is 13.1 acres of property. It's currently vacant land. It's a site of proposed commercial development and Planning Commission has recommended approval of Highway Business C4 District.
Thank you, Ms. Letto. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Remove, second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
Mr. President, can anyone tell me what the proposed use for this property?
Ms. Letto?
This is a site of proposed automobile dealership.
Automobile dealership?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-241 zoning newly annexed property lying west of US Highway 431 South and on the north side of Plainview Drive to Residence 1A District. This was set April 10, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
0.71 acres of property. It's a site of an existing single-family dwelling. The zoning is consistent with the adjacent properties and Planning Commission has recommended approval of Residence 1A District zoning.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing in order to hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, for a removal of a nuisance at 613 Kenyon Road Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. This was set May 8, 2014 at the regular council meeting. Mr. Binion?
Yes, the property identified in this resolution was declared a public nuisance on May 8. The public hearing is to hear objections to declare to the declaration as a public nuisance. The owner received notification of this process and may wish to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue?
Motion to approve.
There are no objections. It's closed. And now we'll move on to the resolution ordering abatement of the nuisance at 613 Kenyon Road Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. Dr. Showers, do you make that motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor of the resolution ordering abatement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of demolition, demolition of the property located at 3421 Glenn Park Drive Northwest. Mr. Binion?
Yes, this property identified in the resolution was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. The resolution authorizes for the assessment of cost of demolition and removal of debris from the property. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The cost was $10,542.40. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond. So, I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of demolishing the property located at 2600 Trail Ridge Road Northwest. Mr. Binion?
Yes, the property identified in this resolution was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. The resolution authorizes for the assessment of the cost of demolition and removal of debris from the property. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The cost was $6,693.34. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond. So, I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no public hearings to be set. We're now communications reports. Where communications from the public, when I call your name, you have three minutes to address the council on any issue. Please give your name and address for the record. Ms. Beverlin McDonald. Welcome, Ms. McDonald.
Hi, here or there?
There.
Hi, my name is Beverlin McDonald. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance. And basically, we're here FEMA and I, well FEMA and SBA, basically in order to inform all of the local residents that have been affected by this disaster to actually come out and register. No matter how small or big, whether you have insurance or not, we ask you to please register and therefore get your name and your address in the system, so therefore you have some recourse later on. SBA will give a low-interest disaster-related loan for your uncompensated uninsured losses, no matter how big or how small your damages are. We give loans to homeowners as well as to renters, as businesses alike, okay? When it comes to our homes, we will give a loan up to $200,000 for your uninsured uncompensated loss. For your personal property or contents, we go up to $40,000. This is at the 2.1% interest rate. Like I said, uninsured, uncompensated. And our loans are based on your actual damages, your actual loss. We also give loans to renters which did not have renters' insurance. We can give them loans for personal property only, as well as their vehicle. And this is at the 2.1% interest rate. When it comes to our businesses, we give business loans for-profit businesses as well as non-profit businesses. Okay, any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Showers?
Yeah. Contact number?
I'll leave some flyers over on the table over here with all of the contact information, as well as our website, which is www.sba.gov. We also have a TTY line for the visual and hearing impaired, which will go into a customer service representative as well.
Do they need to contact you? Dial the number?
Yes, dial the number, the 800 number. If there is no open recovery center in the area, then they can call the 800 number and make application over the phone, or just simply call and ask questions from the customer service representative.
So, if one lives in Limestone or Morgan County and was impacted, they can go through this?
Call the 800 number. That's what the customer service people are there for, to answer any questions, help you with an application, whatever it is, the customer service. We also have bilingual customer service representatives as well. So, don't let language be a barrier or hearing or sight impairment. There is no barriers. Just reach out and we will assist. Thank you.
Ms. Trozczewski?
How long you been doing this? I've been listening to briefings my whole life. I'm not sure I've ever heard anybody brief so concise, so perfect, so informative with all the above. So, I just, that was tremendous. I mean, I'm really impressed with it. I've learned more about what you do right there than I've ever learned any time I've ever heard. So, thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But I didn't hear how long you've been working for them.
Well, I've been with the agency off and on since Hurricane Andrew, 1992.
Okay, so you definitely are an expert.
I've been around a while.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Custer? Mr. Custer, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Nate Custer. I'm a public information officer with FEMA. I'm assigned up here in this part of Alabama. I'm handling basically three counties, Limestone, DeKalb, and Etowah Counties. My job is to work through the media and other ways that are possible to get the word out that people who live in one of those declared counties and had some damage need to register with FEMA. They do that by calling 1-800-621-3362, or going online at disasterassistance.gov. The survivors of the storms a little over three weeks ago have until July 1st to register. We have a disaster recovery center that serves Limestone County. It's located at 11281 Ripley Road. It is open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And that facility will also be open on Memorial Day. And once people register, they will get a call back in a matter of days from a FEMA inspector. He or she will make an appointment to come out and look at the damage and then turn in a report on what that damage is. We would urge people, whether the damage is very minor or catastrophic, to go ahead and register. Some people will say, well, the guy or gal down the street needs the help more than I do. The help is available for everyone. There is no income test on this, on the assistance. And on a case-by-case basis, we'll take a look at your situation. FEMA deals with grants. The SBA deals with loans. The FEMA grants are designed to help you get back on your feet. They're not going to make you whole again if you had some major damage. We urge people to register, even if you have insurance. The insurance may come up short of what it takes to repair your damage. And we also will provide and are providing temporary housing assistance. The preferred method being rental housing or in hotels for people who just simply can't stay in their dwelling. Anyone have any questions?
Give that number again, please.
The number is 1-800-621-3362, or online at disasterassistance.gov.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Ms. Jackie Reed? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and new address for the record.
My name is Jackie Reed, 1000 A. Bob Wallace Avenue. I want to thank Channel 19 first for the great story that they had on the news of the last council meeting with my honorary gift certificate from my family. And thanks to my family. I want to thank you for laying public input. I really enjoyed my time sitting with the mayor and the city council at the last council meeting. Thanks to everyone. I feel very comfortable sitting up there with you. It was a good day. Of course, you like me better up there. You think I won't be noisy, but trust me, if I was sitting up there, I'm sure I'd be making some noise. I want to thank and congratulate and support to all the citizens who saw this very, very well. I want to congratulate all the seniors in Huntsville and the students. Want them to go to college and come back to Huntsville and get their jobs. That's what we need to see them to do. Many awards were given. It's a great city to come back to. I'm proud of my grandson Nathan. He was amongst several this morning in Huntsville Medal who had all As all year. I'm very proud of all, every one of them. I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. Hope to see you back. I want to apologize, last night, I guess I was a little out of line. I want to apologize to a young man, Cameron, last night, and others, as I was a little out of hand at an event I was at. I'm not calling the names of the place where I was at. I was very concerned of an issue and a bit overstatements, I guess. I was settled and it went well. But the young man, we made up this morning at the Huntsville Medal and he's proud of me. I hugged him. I told I may need him to work for me this summer, so everything went well, as usual. Mayor Battle, I understand, and I have to go along with the segregation order that Huntsville has thrown out there too. I understand it's going on tomorrow also, that you have a buyer for Butler High School? Please, I have a problem with the closing of Butler High School. There are no high schools in the center of the city. Westline, Terry Heights, University Place, Morris, and McDonald have nowhere to go to high school, busing these children up and down these roads. 126 today, it's 7.5 million. I wish that we could build a new high school at Butler on those grounds up there. It's bad, busing kids up and down the street. Holmes Avenue Bridge over here, maybe you can tell me that. Are you going to, are you building that bridge for a River Walk? Is that what's taking so long? Is that what we're doing? I wish you would try to answer that for me. That would be happy. And you know what? And you know what?
Ms. Reed, your, Ms. Reed, your time's up. Do you need more time?
One second.
Sure, you, you don't mean one minute?
No.
One second. Okay.
Thank you. I see lots of streets being paved, paved this year. Of course, it's election year. I wish every day was election year, so we could have streets paved all over this city every day. Thank you. I love you and have a good weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Ralph Timberlake? Mr. Timberlake, welcome back.
Mr. President, Ralph, you, hang on just a second. If we can answer Ms. Reed on the Holmes Bridge, it is a flood mitigation program. Uh, it's being widened so that we can, more water can get through and it's part of the flood mitigation program.
Mr. Timberlake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Uh, what brings me here is an old story I heard one time that the city is beautiful, but the water is poison. As you well know, termites inside of a house, a beautiful home, do damage to which is unseen. Such is the case that may be inundating this beautiful city with some infrastructural problems. Nothing can last long when its foundation is corrupted and challenged. I'm speaking of the city does not have a equitable receiving of services in this city. To that end, there had been some of your appointees who have seen fit to deny certain citizens equitable treatment for unlawful and unjust reasons. Uh, this should not be so in a city as progressive and as beautiful and has received so many accolades as I've been privileged to hear in this great hall today. So I believe that you, or like myself, would like to put what's in your heart, that which is just and right before God and man on paper, so that will have a, an unmitigating opportunity to be misinterpreted. Uh, when you say something to one person, it can be lost. But when you write it in, down in indelible ink, it has the, the effect of lasting for generations such as our constitution. As you well know, there's also another problem, uh, of access to records. In a democracy, a people who are the owners and ultimate responsible entities of this country needs to be informed. When certain documents have such ambiguous terms as reasonable, but no definition as to what is reasonable, particularly in time. I say that because we stand in the shadows of the great Supreme Court decision of 1954. As you well know, that was one of the things with all deliberate speed is equated to reasonableness. But I think that we can do better than that. I think we can put some time limits on how long our public servants who are custodians of records will have to honor citizens' legitimate claims to see record. Such petition should not be in any way undermined or obfuscated.
Ms. Timberlake, your time's up. Do you need another minute?
No, sir. Thank you very much. It's a privilege.
Good night. Uh, we're now at eight Huntsville utility items. Uh, Ms. Oshewski is recusing herself from this, will abstain from voting. Eight A is a resolution authorizing approval to extend the contract for external trouble call center services for one year.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by the chair, discussion. Ms. Curtis, would you like to explain this, please?
Sure, this is just an extension of the existing agreement we have with the CRC, which is the company that helps us provide for high-volume call events, perhaps an outage, perhaps after hours. Uh, this is just an extension of that agreement.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries with Ms. Oshewski abstaining. B is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase consulting and support services. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, Ms. Curtis.
Uh, this is software in support for the mapping system of our fiber optic network. This is being done in conjunction with the city as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries with Ms. Oshewski abstaining. C is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a proposed amm, ammendatory agreement for the Madison Charity Lane Transmission Line construction to correct the milestone payment provision. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Showers, Ms. Curtis.
Uh, for reasons I can't explain, there were originally interest was included in these payments. That has been eliminated. There will be no interest accrued on these payments for this project.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries with Ms. Oshewski abstaining. Are there any questions from Mr. Curtis tonight?
Yes.
Dr. Showers?
Mr. Curtis, uh, most of us, uh, was notified that, uh, the TVA, uh, payment, uh, was understated and that, uh, the next, uh, utility bill by constituents will have a slight increase from eight to fifteen dollars. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, what we're talking about is a, is a correction of a rate that was improperly applied from April 3rd to April 25th. It was a human error, uh, as those rates were basically the wrong rate was applied pertaining to the fuel cost adjustment from TVA. I want to be very clear that it was not TVA's error. It was a Huntsville Utilities error. Uh, in the correction of that error, we did find that some customers were building correctly on the underside and that, that is revenue that we had to collect during the month of May. It's a slight adjustment for most people. Uh, on average, we found with our residential customers, it would be anywhere between about eight and fifteen dollars. We're talking about what amounted to about eight tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour adjustment. We do want our customers to know that if anyone's going to have any difficulty paying that adjustment, to please contact us immediately and we will, of course, work with those customers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're now at our board appointments. We voted on, we have a resolution to appoint Donna Alt Parker to beautification board for a term to expire October 1st, 2014. This was made by Mr. Kling. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. Showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries. Are there other board appointment nominations?
Yes, I'm surprised I would like to resubmit the name of Reverend Willie Hinton, uh, for a two-year term uh, that would expire on, uh, well, it doesn't have the expiration date, but he's on the Huntsville Police Citizen Advisory Council. I'm nominating him again to serve another two-year term.
Thank you, sir. Are there other nominations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Oshewski?
I tried to track this down today and I'm not sure, so I just want to get this on the record. The railroad, uh, HMC, RRA, um, Huntsville City, what, I, I don't know what the whole thing stands for, but it's a rail, it's the railroad, and I've had, say again?
Railroad Authority.
Railroad Authority. We, I have a gentleman that's been on that. His, uh, his name's Lum, Mark Lum. He's been on it. They were led to believe that it was a six-year and I was, he, they wrote me and asked they're going to move to five years, and so that would mean to be up now. I, I asked my folks to chase that today and we haven't gotten an answer. I just don't want to get into next month and get all screwed up, so I don't, I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, we, we're working on that.
All right, thanks.
Uh, any other board appointment nominations? We're now at 10 approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, we move for payment of vouchers in the amount of $8,934,132.76. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Showers, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it carries. Ms. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
Uh, nothing else, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first off, uh, members of council, um, is Jim McGuffey here? Jim, would you come forward? I want to make the, y'all remember Jim, he was here last week and spoke to the council and, uh, was very eloquent and he has been representing us very well, uh, in the city. And, um, we're appointing him to the position of manager of planning services at grade, salary grade 21 step 2. Um, this is my earlier appointment. Uh, Jim has been working for us for, has it been, how many years?
Five and a half years.
Five and a half years, uh, and has done a very good job down in, uh, down in zoning department. And I think he'll do a great job for us, uh, over in the planning department. And I'd like to ask for, uh, council approval on this appointment. I would.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Kling, and second by Dr. Showers, discussion.
Uh, Mr. President, I can just kind of echo what Mayor Battle had, had said. I've had contact with McGuffey on a lot of neighborhood issues and, uh, he's very thorough and he checks into it. Not every time is the neighborhood going to be happy with the solution, but, uh, uh, he does a great professional job and I think he'll be a great appointment.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as, as another announcement, um, I'd like for everybody to remember with Memorial Day coming up, um, we have, uh, at Maple Hill Cemetery at 11 o'clock, the laying of the wreath ceremony. Um, it's put on by American Legion, First Patriot Support, the City of Huntsville and the Alabama, North Alabama Veterans and Fraternal Organ, Organizations Coalition. Uh, Lieutenant General David Mann will be speaking there. It will be from 11 to about 12 on Monday, May 26th at Maple Hill Cemetery. And, um, it's, it's, it's a very fitting, uh, tribute to those who have, um, suffered and sacrificed for us. So it's a very good thing and would like to encourage people to come out for that. Also, Mr. President, we have, uh, two appointments, uh, um, I think y'all have some appointments also to the Citizens Advisory Committee. We have two appointments, uh, from the mayor, on the mayor's side. Like to appoint Gary Whitley and Jennifer Nelson to the, um, to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, sir.
And that's all I have, sir.
Okay, Ms. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I want to thank those that came to, uh, our, our town meeting that I had last Monday night. Mr. Timberlake is, is not, had left us, but he did raise some issues that, uh, I told him I'd look into. Uh, there was a problem he had with him getting, um, signed up for a computer class. In case he's still out in the, in the lobby, I checked into that. Uh, the problem was, nothing against him personally, it's just there was a set number and that number of, uh, first come, first served had already been filled up. So if, uh, Mr. Timberlake's out in the lobby, uh, we did find out that that was the answer to, to his concern that he had. Something, uh, that kind of came up that people had brought up, uh, at, uh, I guess two meetings that I've been at over the last couple of weeks. Uh, as we know, and we heard it from the EMA folks, that we had a pretty significant, uh, weather situation a couple of weeks ago. Concerns were made, uh, to me from two neighborhoods about the fact that we did not have tornado shelters. And I think what we had found out is that there might be a liability issue as far as the city opening up a building or a school facility being used, or even a church. Uh, but still, there is a concern that people have, and I guess I'd like to see if somehow we could find some way to address it or have some sort of an official plan of action or a list of, uh, volunteer churches and facilities that we can notify the public of, uh, if, uh, if there is going to be, uh, uh, bad weather. Uh, I was a direct hit from 1989, so I kind of empathize with the concerns that were expressed to me, uh, by people, um, from, uh, two different neighborhood areas. And I think that is something that maybe we could see if there's a plan of action or something that can be done to communicate available shelters that are open for those people who, who feel a need to go to them if there's enough advanced time. Uh, also, is Shane Davis out in the audience? Shane is sort of everybody's main man. Uh, Shane, I guess a couple of things, uh, that have been kind of pending. Uh, the, uh, uh, there's been a plan, I think, to put in some noise-abating holly bushes along LNN Drive. Do you know what the schedule is for that to take place?
Council Kling, their schedule to start, uh, next week. Uh, we had some issues getting the survey drought of what private property and public property was there along the backside of the rail of LNN, but, uh, that should start late next week after the holidays.
And I guess one other issue that's been raised by the neighborhood, uh, has anything, a final determination been made concerning the, the truck routing that would be used for the deliveries at the, uh, the new Walmart going into that area next to the Piedmont neighborhood, Lower Piedmont?
Yes, sir. Glenn Wilkins with Walmart's the government affairs person, and, uh, they sent a draft to me late last week. Uh, I made some edits to a letter, uh, to, for them to commit not to use Drake and LNN as the intersection. And they have a new truck route that's actually South Parkway and up the service roads and the south side of LNN to come in. I think everybody's happy with that and hopefully have a next, a final letter presented to council in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, good. Thank you, Shane. Appreciate all your good work. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, delighted to announce this Saturday, there's an event that's going to honor our wounded warriors. Uh, this is the 18th Annual Old School and Music Festival. It will be held at the Huntsville Dragway that's Saturday, May the 24th. Mayor, I received a document, uh, from the Madison County Chairman depleting, uh, the MPO, uh, documented roads and the monies that, uh, were spent, uh, to accomplish this letter. I'm sure you got a copy of that letter?
Yes, sir.
Would you comment? I read this whole thing and I, I had some concerns about the way in which it was presented. I was going to call Mr., uh, Mr. Hamilton. I saw him today, but it was just too late to bother you with it today. And I just needed to talk to somebody about these dollar figures. Mayor, can you comment on this?
All, all the, all the numbers in there, what, um, uh, we went through last year, the round of A-trip funding, and then we went through the Restore Our Roads funding, uh, to put $250 million worth of programs in, in, to the city of Huntsville. And, um, then another, gosh, I can't, can't remember how, what the total was on, uh, A-trip funding. It was something like 110 million or something on A-trip funding, 89 million, I'm sorry, on A-trip funding. This just solidifies all those numbers that, uh, have been committed by the state and by local governments there. If you remember, the A-trip funding was one-third, um, local and then two-thirds state. And so a lot of that money is, um, ties up, uh, local money. And, and when we put it on the MPO, once you put the projects on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that sets them in, in line to be started by the state. Uh, they have to be on the Metropolitan Planning Organization to be started by, by the state, and all these are state projects. So, um, I think he's just reiterating all those projects that, um, that have finally come to full fruition.
Uh, we're finished with you privately.
Uh, it, it was, it was an interesting letter.
Counsel, did you all get copies of the, that letter? I, uh, just, I just have some concerns about the way in which it was presented and our projects, uh, contrast in their projects. It's, uh, it just caught my attention. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, uh, I had another issue that I needed you to investigate. Uh, in the fire department, I'm told that, um, the cutoff scores, uh, that these applicants who come in into that department have been coming in with a grade 70. And I'm told now that there were some five or six in this last academy who made, uh, grades of 70, but are being told now that they'll have to be removed from the academy or the lists because they have changed the score from 70 to 80. I think we do have policy documentation that says that any of these applicants that makes the academy, that they have a year's time, uh, in which to retake, uh, the state tests, uh, to maintain their status as an employee of the city. I'm told as we speak tonight that that has been changed and there are some employees, five or six of them, that are being, uh, put on a list to be removed from the list. Would you investigate that and report back to the council? I had a prepared statement tonight for the item that I put on hold, uh, I had a prepared statement tonight for the item that I put on hold last council meeting that dealt with the policy on disciplinary opportunities. In that policy, there was a new item added, a item F. After E, they put in a complete new policy. And of course, because Councilman Culver is not here tonight, I won't read all of this. I would ask the council if they would hold this again. The big part of this proposed F, it gives employees a review opportunity, but it doesn't give them due process. In other words, it states that the department head or a representative or administrator can make a move to terminate and they'll give them a review, but the decision is final. What I would like to do, council members, is to hold this again and relook at item F. Mr. Hamilton, if you would assist me in that, I'd like to review that before we come back with it again. That item F of the proposed change to item 13, the policy that deals with disciplinary action. That's all I have for tonight. Am I confusing you, John?
No, sir, but I think first, council has to take action to remove it from the agenda.
Yes.
Before I could do that review.
I will make a motion to postpone.
Okay. Ms. Roszewski? It's your time to speak, if you'd like to speak.
That you didn't get up because we didn't have any, we're okay in that department or you just didn't want to do it? All right, so that's not a good news story then, that you didn't speak today. I went to a meeting today that I was pretty impressed, I didn't realize this, but there's a group out there called Operation Final Home that builds a home mortgage-free for military members that come back that got PTSD or wounded or can't, you know, handicapped issues and all the above. And the city has, with Benton Homes, has, is leading the effort under this arm of Operation Final Home to build a mortgage-free home about 2,600 square feet with handicap accessibility. It'll be the first one in Alabama under this organization. For, it's actually for Marines who got beat up pretty good. And then I know, Jerry, you and I agree that that doesn't fix it all, I got it. But the fact that we're reaching out and here in Huntsville off of Zert Road, this home's going to be built in one of the communities over there is pretty impressive. So I just, I went to that today and I was real impressed with that. And then lastly, Memorial Day, and I don't speak anymore than what's already been spoken. But we live in a town that is supported by the, that gets a lot of love from the government and obviously by the military. And it's just great when we speak about it as much as we do in this community. And I truly believe in my heart that most, most of everybody here gets it. And it's an honor to have been a former soldier and it's an honor that we hang out with a bunch of folks that actually represent our country and what we stand for anymore that we're going to honor next week, this weekend, Memorial Day. And it's real proud to be a part of that process. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of the council, I wish to appoint, make the following appointments to the MPO Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Todd Slyman, Mr. John Ofenlock, and Mr. Dave Cousins. And then this week has been graduation week. If you've been downtown, you've certainly noticed a lot of traffic. And I believe tonight Grissom's graduating and tomorrow night is Huntsville High. I want to keep, one, wish all our graduates, you know, a successful journey from here on out. And also hope that tonight and tomorrow night, we adults can do everything possible to keep those children safe and make it through this weekend. And so I'm praying for them.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Is there still any room left on that committee? I know that we're setting another slot over for Mr. Showers and Mr. Culver, but does that fill them all up?
There's one slot left intentionally because I wanted to.
Okay, but you're not, there's still, that's, that one slot's already taken or kind of set aside then?
We'll have to vote on it, but I've asked to consider some other names for that one slot I wasn't ready to make.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, I didn't know if there's, because there was another name that I had seen that I thought would be a good prospect, but I think you're.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to propose them. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-326 for street name change request from Penistar Drive to Remington Drive, Remington Trail Southwest. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers, discussion? I certainly think this makes sense and will be proud to have a Remington Trail in Huntsville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is ordinance number 14-327 to amend section 13 of ordinance 04-315 Personnel Policies and Procedures for Modification of the Conduct and Disciplinary Policy. This was introduced May 8th at the 2014 regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Dr. Showers, I believe this is the item you'd like to hold?
Yes, I would like to move to postpone this item.
Second.
To our next regular council meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Kling, you second that? All those in favor postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is ordinance number 14-328 Adopting Changes Made by the Madison County Commission to Voting Precincts Within the Madison County, Alabama. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Showers, discussion? Mr. Heygood, could you briefly describe this, please?
Yes, sir. The county commission redrew some of the precinct lines as well as they combined some of the precincts. And this is to approve the county commission's moving of those precincts and also deleting some.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is resolution number 14-346 Revoking That Certain License Agreement Between the City of Huntsville and Dwight Wright Approved by Resolution Number 13-568 on July 25, 2013. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Council members, it's, Ms. Jeffron?
If it's okay with the council, I would ask that you postpone this one more, one more time. Met with Mr. Wright and his attorney earlier this week. And although the proposal that was submitted, has, I have discussed that with both the mayor and the president of the council. And that proposal has not been met with favor, I do think there's a way to resolve this that may work to everyone's satisfaction.
Council members, I move to postpone this to the June 26th regular council meeting. A second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Ms. Kling?
If I could, could I ask that whatever is being worked on or if there is a proposal, that it be sent out so the other council members know about it? The only thing I know is, I think there's a story or something that was in the newspaper, but I had no idea any of the details or what it is. I guess if I'm going to have to make a decision on this, I'd just like to know, you know, when the time, before the time comes, what's on the table and what the recommendation is.
Okay. 14 is new business items for introduction. 14A is introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 8979 Classification Salary Plan Ordinance. B is the introduction of an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance number 13-630 to modify the authorized strength of the department. Those items have been properly introduced. Council members, we're now at 15. The chair holds 15U and 15AA. Are there any other items you'd like to hold?
Would you hold 15CC?
Yes, I will. Right now, we have 15U, 15AA, and 15CC. Anything else? Hearing non-15A is ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus equipment identified as a magistics copier model ZC-55 and serial number 5010080 located at 300 Madison Street per agreement with Mars LLC. B is a resolution authorizing mayor to issue travel funds in advance for police department employee attending polygraph certification training. C is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreements with the low bidders meeting specifications outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. D is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. E is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 13630 by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. F is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 13-630 by changing authorized personnel strength in the various departments and funds. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter land lease agreement with Pine Lawn Farms for the lease of property from the city of Huntsville. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter lease agreement with Sublet Farms, Inc. for the lease of property in North Huntsville Industrial Park. I is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Reed Contract and Service, Inc. for periodic bid for various construction projects, 2013. Project number 6513SP31 by modification number one. J is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. for engineering design services for Shields Roads Bridge Improvements, project number 6514BR02. K is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter development agreement between the city of Huntsville and Lost Boys Land Company LLC to provide sanitary sewer to the Wilson Cove subdivision, project number 6507SM01. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement with Alfred Benich and Company for traffic engineering services for South Memorial Parkway, Visum Simulation and City Representation, project number 6514RD05. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter an agreement with Alfred Benich and Company for traffic engineering services for University Drive City Representation, project number 6514RD06. N is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter cooperative agreement among the city of Huntsville and Downtown Huntsville, Inc. and 200 West Side Square TIC for outdoor lighting enhancements, project number 6514SP29. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to the real estate sales contract between the city of Huntsville and Vet Properties LLC for proposed Logic Core Headquarters, project number 6514SP28. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to amend the contract with Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc. for resurfacing residential streets, 2013 Phase 1, project number 6513RR01 by change order number one. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement between the city of Huntsville and the Huntsville City Board of Education for the demolition of Terry Heights Elementary School. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Garver LLC for engineering, construction, administrative services for 2014 Water Pollution Control Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation, project number 6514SP14 by modification number one. S is a resolution to apply for Federal Transit Administration 49 U.S.C. Section 533 grant. T is a resolution to apply for Federal Transit Administration 49 U.S.C. Section 5307 grant. V is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to revoke Caden Bank Letter Credit 4647145 for Heritage Brook subdivision. W is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to revoke Regions Bank Letter Credit Number 55106534 for Old Cobblestone Phase 3 subdivision. X is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to revoke Regions Bank Letter Credit Number 55106540 for Old Cobblestone Phase 3 subdivision. Y is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to revoke South Bank Letter Credit Number 2013-300 for McMullen Place Phase 3 at McMullen Cove subdivision. Z is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim with Charles Caldwell. Double B is a resolution authorizing the use of the DS200 precinct scanner and tabulator electronic voting devices and the automark voter, $87,000, to provide assistance to disabled voters in the general municipal election to be held on the 26th day of August, 2014, and each election thereafter until changed by the Huntsville City Council. Double D is a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings for fee simple titled or properly located along Highway 20. Double E is a resolution authorizing mayor to sign the plat entitled The Bridges and Research Park Phase 2 A Re subdivision of Lot 2 of The Bridges and Research Park. The chair moves for consolidation approval of 15A through 15T, 15V through 15Z, 15BB, 15DD, and 15EE.
Second.
We have a motion to consolidate and approve by the chair, second by Ms. Kling. All those in favor, consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15U is an ordinance clearing a portion of Lot 4A of Twickenham Square subdivision Phase 2 surplus and authorizing the mayor to enter a lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and Twickenham Square Ventures LLC. The chair moves to unanimous consent to consider this item tonight?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Roszewski, how do you vote? Ms. Kling?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have unanimous consent. The chair moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Jeffron, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is a lease of airspace in order to provide for a pedestrian connector, elevated connector between the parking garage and the apartment complex at Twickenham Square Development.
Thank you, sir. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Double A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement between the city of Huntsville and Direct Communications, Inc.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Ms. Kling. Mayor Battle or Mr. Hamilton?
Sure. Mr. President, this is a contract for lobbying in the state capitol by Direct Communications. With Ms. Jordan moving over to planning, that has left all that lobbying to Steve Raby and he's had to spend a lot more time than the original contract had in there in Montgomery, staying overnight in there and staying out through the legislative session. He helped us through this last legislative session and did not charge us any more to do that. But I did say we're taking a lot more time than we originally had in our contract for you taking on all the lobbying efforts for us. And we are readjusting that contract. We will have a full amount of that contract in, when we come back around with budget in October. And this is additional $30,000 to that contract.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Double C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and the Young Man's Christian Association of Metropolitan Huntsville, Inc. doing business as Heart of the Valley YMCA.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by the chair. Mayor Battle?
Mr. Hamilton has been working on this and John, you want to kind of walk him through this?
Counsel, this is the lease agreement with the YMCA for the childcare facility that is immediately adjacent to the Showers Center. I, we, they've been in there for a number of years. One of the things that we discovered in working some maintenance issues from them is that we did not have a current lease agreement with them. We've worked very closely with them for a number of months now to do the repairs required because the facility in some places was in bad shape. So those repairs are now prepared to move forward. We have an agreement with them and their board has approved the work that we're going to do in partnership with them and has approved the conditions of this lease that allows them to stay there, what I would expect to be indefinitely.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no legal department item transactions. We're a non-roster communications for the public. If you'd like to address the council, please go to the microphone. We'll start with Mr. Cox, since he didn't get to go last time. Welcome, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jerry Cox, 4029, Telstar Circle. Mr. President, I had issues with three of the items that's on the agenda, but I always like to get with the department heads before the meeting and try to resolve them rather than bring them to the council. So I did that and so I didn't, that's the reason I hadn't signed up. But as a United States Army veteran, I wish to respectfully acknowledge the three US Army soldiers killed in combat in the war in Afghanistan in the past two weeks to include a 19-year-old woman soldier. Mr. President, I'm very glad this past Monday to see Old Glory flying properly at the depot. I want to thank whoever was responsible for getting that issue that really concerned me corrected. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Some real concerns is that I'd like to see when you do the budget, I am for city employees a 4% raise as Athens gave their employees a 4% raise, as you know. We want to be like every city around us, so I want you to give that some consideration. I also think the people, the directors of the parks at night that stay at these parks, that stay till 9:30 and 10 o'clock, need a raise. If they're there late, these ballgames goes on from 7:30 to 9:30 and 10 o'clock and some of these things. I don't know if they get paid or not. I hadn't looked into that yet, but I mean, that's a consideration. They're working late hours at night. And also I asked to see the bulletin board the other day. I didn't know you had one. I've been coming 30 years. I didn't know you had a bulletin board with meetings. It is a joke, very joke. You can beat that. It's out in the front of the building. I couldn't even see up high enough to read the thing. It's sitting out there on a piece of paper, little bitty print of the meetings of the city of Huntsville. Now, we can beat that. We can beat that. I think Channel 42, every department needs to be responsible, I'm going to hold somebody responsible, I don't know who, to get those meetings on Channel 42, MPO, zoning interference, planning department, whatever you got going on that the public might could want to come and see. Of course, I know they're not as interested as I am, but someone, please help and look into that. I know we can beat that bulletin board. I can beat that bulletin board. Thank you and have a good weekend.
You, too. Dr. Showers, so you'll turn on the microphone, please?
You mentioned earlier about your concerns about closing some schools in the southwest, in particular the. You mentioned earlier about your concerns about closing some schools in the southwest, in particular the Butler High School. I just want to let you know that today, the hearings were held at the federal building and they will go on tomorrow, probably end tomorrow if you're interested in attending.
I'll be there tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling?
Kind of following up on something that Mr. Cox had raised at the, at the last meeting. The, there's some flags at the, on the western part of Drake Avenue that are either below standard or some flag poles are actually empty. And I did have some contact with American Legion 237 and they're supposed to be in the very near future getting those, those flags up. I think there are three or four flag poles that they're, that they're looking at. Also, Mr. President, I think on a, on a private note, I think we all know that Mr. Joffreyon experienced a very, very sad loss since the last meeting. And Peter, I've gone through a similar loss myself. And I think, speaking for everybody here, I think we, all of our thoughts are with you and we certainly wish you the very best and know that we're thinking of you. Nothing magical that we can say, but we are thinking about you and we care.
Anything further? Move to adjourn? We're adjourned.